This meeting of May 6, 2020 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, and was included in a list of meetings noticed transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press, and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and the Borough website on May 4, 2020. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file on the office of the Municipal Clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Proper notice having been given, the Municipal Clerk is directed to include the statement in the minutes of the meeting. Please be advised that due to the current state of emergency and public health emergency declared by the Governor Phil Murphy pursuant to an executive order and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the general public will be excluded from Borough Council meetings until further notice. The public will be able to participate in all Borough Council meetings by telephone bridge. A call number will be posted on the Borough website. Members of the public will be able to give public comment during relevant portions of the meeting. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola is not here yet. Uh, Councilmember Valkos?
Yes.
Council President Ryan? Mayor Breon? We, uh, we have a quorum, all are present. Uh, first up on the agenda, we have Economic Development by Mr. Cliff Moore.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Um, I spoke to Andrew today, who's from Beacon Planning, uh, for an update on both Shadow Lawn and the projects on Bay Avenue. Uh, he told me that Shadow Lawn was moving along, and he'd probably like to have another Zoom meeting in the next couple of weeks, now that things were progressing there. Uh, Michael Salano, who's the owner of the other properties on Bay Avenue, is, um, working diligently in his current business. And with that being said, not that things are on hold, but he really hasn't done much since our last talk with him. Uh, Mr. Mizola for, uh, 238 Bay Avenue, um, I spoke to him. He's in Florida. Uh, he's moving along. Um, it's just him going back and forth with the, uh, property owner. Uh, we know there's going to be some issues with the soil, and that has not been resolved yet. Uh, but he still seems very, very optimistic. Um, I've sent out a bunch of communications over the last few weeks. Um, uh, the postcard campaign, Memorial Day decorating contest. Um, I've been updating, as I've been getting the information, uh, for all of the different loans and programs that are out there. Um, it seems a little bit confusing because it's the same information coming from two different sources. So I try to keep them separate. Uh, the takeout bags, most restaurants have takeout bags from the county. Um, I did shoot through the county yesterday. They'll be picking up some more bags. I'll inform everybody when those are available again. Uh, county takeout initiative is up to date for the restaurants. Um, Jack has been updating the, uh, business lists as we've been going along. And, uh, yesterday, um, it came out of committee for the liquor to be sold in steel containers. It needs to go before the full Assembly and Senate. Hopefully, they'll be voting on that in the next week or so. And trauma on wheels opened today temporarily, uh, using a satellite location for them to distribute food. Um, I just got the information on the farmer's market, and I'll be working to do that on tomorrow. Um, and then also, uh, process with communication. And that's, that's all I have.
I just have a question. Did Councilmember Mizola enter the room?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, bud.
Hello?
Wait, did we ever talk about, here, I do have one question.
Really?
Maybe I'll wait for Kim to answer this. For Park Fest? Are they still playing from home?
To the best of my knowledge, uh, no. From the best of my li- knowledge, it's, um, it's, it's going to be done from their homes based on the Zoom, the Zoom meeting that we had the other day. I've not heard anything since.
Okay. So, right, I spoke to Matt just a little while ago, he's camp. Um, he feels like he doesn't want to create any issues, so it's going to be done from people's yards or house. And what he's gonna, he asked if I'll go and like livestream through the park, or have somebody livestream, you know, going through the park, and they'll just do little snaps and snippets. Um, also, the muralist that Miranda Nash is contacting as part of the Arts Council, um, they're looking at painting one of the trods that are in the Borough yard during the event, and doing clip bits as well for, for that. Miranda said that she's gonna be sending over a few different ideas. I'll, I'll circulate that when I get it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff. Thank you.
Does Council have any other issues they want to discuss? That being said, uh, do I, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to the executive session at 7:00 P.M.
I'll move.
Uh, who made the motion?
I'll second it.
Uh, Ken.
Ken, first motion. Carolyn, second. All in favor?
Correct. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This meeting of May 6, 2020 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, and was included in a list of meetings noticed transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press, and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and the Borough website on May 4, 2020. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file on the office of the Municipal Clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Proper notice having been given, the Municipal Clerk is directed to include the statement in the meeting in the minutes. Please be advised that due to the current state of emergency and public health emergency declared by Governor Phil Murphy, pursuant to an executive order and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the general public will be excluded from Borough Council meetings until further notice. The public will be able to participate in all Borough Council meetings by telephone bridge. A call number will be posted on the Borough website. Members of the public will be able to give public comment during relevant portions of this meeting. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Council President Ryan. Mayor Breon. All are present. A quorum is formed. First up, we have ordinance O-20-13. This is an ordinance designating restricted parking in front of a residence occupied by persons, by a person with disabilities. Uh, this is for a public hearing date of May 20, 2020. And the address is on the eastern side of Waterwich at 121 Waterwich Avenue.
I will offer it.
I'll second.
Offered by Mayor Breon, seconded by Councilmember Braswell. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, the public hearing is set for May 20, 2020. Next, we have several resolutions to go over, uh, starting with Resolution R-20-123. A resolution to payment of bills. Do I have an offer?
I'll offer.
Offered by Mayor Breon, second. Seconded by Council President Rosemary Ryan. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Breon. So ordered. Uh, next, we have Resolution R-20-124. A resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for grant writing services in connection with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Efficiency Achievement Program, uh, otherwise known as LEAP Grant Applic- Grant Application. Do I have an offer?
I'll offer it.
Mayor Breon offers, second.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Council President Ryan. Uh, I will now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Breon. So ordered. R-20-124 passes. Next, we have R-20-125. There's one minor correction. In the third whereas clause, uh, it should say goods and services, not God and services. That is the only correction, uh, aside. Mayor Breon offers. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Council President Ryan seconds. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos. Council President Ryan. Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. R-120, R-20-125 passes. Uh, next, we have R-20-126. This is a resolution extending the property tax payment grace period to June 1st. I've had a lot of calls about this.
And Pat de Blasio is on the line if you have any questions.
Yes, Pat, we just, um, this is, um, this is, this would extend the grace period for the fine in which, uh, you do not, in fact, we find, uh, it's, it's been extended to June 1st. This is following the Governor's threat.
Correct.
Pat, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I said, is there anything else that you would like to add to what I just said?
Um, no, but I, I guess, well, yes, quickly, um, is that I did have a concern with the larger mortgage companies. Now, two out of the three have paid. Uh, we're expecting the other large mortgage company paid tomorrow. Um, so with that said, um, you know, the, the town did get the majority of the cash, so we shouldn't have any cash issues. Um, and it's something that the Governor had asked to do, so I believe it's, uh, now correct to do it.
Thank you, Pat, and what's that? I'm going to offer it.
Offered by Mayor Breon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council President Ryan. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Uh, Resolution R-20-126 passes. The tax deadline, grace period is extended to June 1st. Next, we have R-20-127. A resolution approving change order number six and declaring acceptance of the contract for improvements to Cornwall Street and John Street. And in the version you received earlier, Cornwall was spelled Cornwell. That's been corrected.
I will offer it.
Uh, Cornwall is correct.
Is it? My bad.
Yeah, that's how it was originally moved.
It's, it's wrong, it's wrong on the street signs.
Okay, I will change it back then. Uh, to, to adhere to the tax map. Do I have an offer?
I will offer it.
Mayor Breon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Council President Ryan, second. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. R-20-127 passes. Uh, next, under Other Business, we have discussions on municipal building and food trucks. And I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Oh, I was actually gonna turn that over to Ms. Gonzalez. And I would ask that everyone, uh, please mute this phone because we're not gonna be able to hear the speakers if you guys don't mute your phones. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I couldn't hear actually any of that except Gonzalez. What, what was that?
I said, I was gonna turn that over to you, Ms. Gonzalez, and then I asked everyone to mute their phones because there was a lot of echoing going on.
And this is, we're up to the food truck, right?
Municipal building.
We're up to the municipal building.
Oh, the municipal building. Oh, my God, I really wasn't coming through clear at all. Um, so where we're at with the municipal building is the design that was sent out. If everyone likes it, um, do you want to move forward? Do you not want to move forward? And that's, that's, that's about, that's about it for the municipal building. Um, if you do want to move forward, I can, you know, then forward it on to Kevin Settenbrino so he can get moved, um, moving on the rest of the plans and begin the bid spec. We will need to increase, is Pat de Blasio still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sorry, Pat. So, um, what we would need to do is the cost estimate is, um, available, and we would need to know, um, when and if we could then up the or, up the ordinance, um, being that we would know the cost at that point. We do not have the final FEMA number. Uh, we won't have that until the bid specs are done. FEMA wants to see that you're moving forward with the project no matter what.
Uh, I believe that everyone is, uh, is agreed that we would like to resolve this revised plan. Matt, could you talk, we need to hold, roll.
Say again, can you repeat that, Your Honor?
Could you, I said, I, I believe the low five of us are agreed on the new design. Could you just please hold the roll on that?
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Braswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Braswell agrees with the new design. Councilmember Mizola.
I, the answer is yes, however, I would like to add that I would like a breakdown from Mr. Settenbrino in reference to the additional costs. I want to see where those additional costs are coming into play.
Yeah, this is-
Where the additional costs are.
And this isn't an official vote, would just, she just wants to take a, a part. Uh, Councilmember Valkos. Councilmember Valkos.
Uh, I can barely hear anyone. I'm getting this weird feedback. Um, yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Breon.
Yes.
Okay, so Council has indicated that they would like to move forward with the project. Uh, Councilmember Mizola notes that she would like to see a breakdown of the additional costs. This is all noted for the record.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. I'll see if I can get through to the students. Sorry. On to food trucks. Um, okay, I can begin the conversation. Um, this is Kim. Um, we had a restaurant that wanted to put a food truck out. They already had a mercantile. Um, they needed to put the food truck out due to, it was easier to operate during the pandemic. We went ahead, um, we moved forward with that taking care of. Um, there were some slight differences. We, we found out some information that if it is the business, it is their lot, they're not driving it or moving it around. It is not a peddler's license, which we only hold a certain amount of licenses for in town. The issue was that we had another business that came to us also wanting the food truck license. Um, and it had to be done more or less in the same time capacity as the prior, because we set precedence on that. I spoke to the department that had to do the inspection, and they said it, it is somewhat of a hardship to do rush inspections, especially during this time, um, because they have their other items that they have to, um, do. And, you know, they asked that we figure out what exactly, what is the protocol? How, how much time, uh, would be needed? Now, I, I wasn't even gonna bring it up for the meeting, but, uh, Council President Ryan had asked that I actually put it on the agenda, um, as, as well, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Um, and it is a good idea that we have it laid out exactly what the process is, who contacts who, and, um, if everything's in line, and that there may be given, you know, told that, hey, listen, we might not be able to get a, um, an inspection for 72 hours, um, unless it's an emergency. Um, we all know that we want to support the businesses, the restaurants at this time, but at the same time, there are other things on the schedule, and we are working on a modified schedule as well. And sometimes things are just not possible due to other emergencies that might happen.
And another reason that I wanted to have it on is because I went to speaking to the mayor about this. In 2016, they went through, the council at the time went through how many licenses there would be, if it was going to move, if it was going to stay in one position. And none of us that currently sit on the council, except for, um, kind of assuming you would know, would know what this whole process is, and I think that we should know that. So, just to continue on, on that conversation that I had with Council President earlier, um, back in 2016, there were, we only had permit, a permitted for five new peddlers. And peddlers are defer, defined as going from place to place, or, uh, you know, door to door, or moving in some manner. Um, so we expanded that from five to 10 peddling it. Um, so the restaurants that have a food, their own food truck that does not move off their premise is not considered a peddler because it's not moving. So it's an extension of their current mercantile license. But that truck still needs to have a fire permit, and it has to have a, uh, an inspection from the Monmouth County Health Department. Just so that all are aware, how it, that's how it works out there. So if you've got a food truck and you're staying on your property and it's part of your current mercantile, there's no limit as to the number currently on, in our ordinance. The only limit is for peddlers. So just that all of council and the public is aware of, uh, of what was done back in 2016.
And are, I, and I don't know even if this is an issue as well, Mayor, is, is that okay? Is, are we okay with every business having a food truck that they would put on their property or that they're operating from their property? Is there a limit? Should there be a limit? How does that work? Um, or do we just let it play out?
Uh, I see what you're saying, but I don't, I mean, a food truck is, is a, it's not a cheap thing. Uh, there is an expense to it. Um, even a lot of the, the largest, uh, restaurants in town do not have such things. They, they don't want such things. Uh, so we just have, we have two, and I don't see that as a problem if all of a sudden there's, you know, a great demand for it, which I'm not certain.
Well, we have three, right?
They're different operations. What do you got to add to that, Paul?
I think there are three. I think there's a fourth putting in, um, for an application. Um, I, I just want to be sure because I know that when the very first came in, um, I had gotten a lot of pushback on that, so I just, if that direction has changed, then that, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
At the present time, I have only received, uh, for this particular, um, situation, I've only received two, uh, uh, applications.
No, this is different, yeah. No, yeah, this is different.
Yeah, but we have an existing one.
As far as the mobile vendors, I believe five of those licenses have been taken.
Right, and then I have one or two more that are going to be.
Yeah, so there's still mobile vendor licenses, uh, in, in play.
Does it matter if it's on a different block and block? If it's owned, that block is owned by someone, does it matter if it's on a different lot and block?
It has to be on the lot and block that is owned by the, the business that has the current mercantile. If it does not go from place to place, not a peddler, but an extension of premise. And obviously, this, obviously, no alcohol can be served from any of these trucks.
I do have a question. Even if it's not the same block and lot as the actual restaurant, can a food truck go in on another lot that they own?
If it's owned by that business owner.
Well, that's my, that was my question. Okay.
I think, uh, as usual, Brian, I would ask you to, uh, jump in here with any of the other legal matters. I know that you've gone through this a couple of times.
Well, yeah, you said it correctly, that peddlers are the ones that are moving from place to place, house to house, street to street, selling goods wares, and you're limited at 10. If it's stationary, it does not have a limit. There's a mercantile license. You are required still through the Borough's Retail Food Handling Establishment Code to get a certificate of approval. That goes through the Monmouth County Board of Health. You are required to get fire inspections. But it's all laid out in the Borough Code, Section 42 sets forth for the peddler. Section 163 sets forth for Retail Food Handling Establishment Code. If you want revisions or you want to discuss suggested, uh, revisions, we can certainly address that in due course. But right now, there's, there's no limitation on the fixed, uh, food trucks. And if they're, as you said, if they're putting it on their own property or their own lot and block that they own, and it's not moving, and it's not transporting, and it's not going back and forth, it's not subject to that limit with the peddler's licenses. And I think Matt had alluded to the fact you still have approximately five peddler's licenses left, right?
Yeah, I believe there's five left.
Please enter your conference access code followed by the pound key. You will now be placed into the conference.
Well, the interested, uh, food trucks are from, uh, already established local restaurants?
We have two that are currently, and there are two other, um, food trucks that we're looking to come into town as well.
What do you?
I have heard that in them.
So, so they want to, these are, so these are not existing businesses that want to do a food truck. They're from somewhere else.
Yeah, but we do have those licenses open still, yeah.
Right, but they would have to go through the background check.
Right, and a mercantile license. Right.
And these would be, these food trucks.
Correct.
And, in, in general, I, uh, those kinds of things worry me because it, it's not fair to the, uh, to the brick and mortar restaurants. They have to pay property taxes and insurance and everything. Someone can roll in town and take some of their business. But, uh, but we have, like you said, we have a certain number of pedro licenses, so at least that'll keep it under control.
Well, the brick and mortar places have an option of renting it out to somebody else too, don't they?
It would, it would be a se-
Releasing out the food truck to somebody else?
It would be a separate business that would be coming into town, and I think they would require a mercantile license, unless they were an employee. If it's a separate entity, they're gonna require a separate mercantile.
Yeah, but I think, like, the one, I believe that we were told the one had another person come operate the one truck, but is under that business. I guess they could do it that way.
Right.
Well, that's all right, as long as it's associated with, with a existing horse farm. But when we have someone just, just work from out.
That's not what it really says, because we have one that's currently there that isn't associated, that's been established that isn't associated with another restaurant. So that's not what-
Yes, I know we have one that's like-
Our ordinance says, right? Right, Brian?
I couldn't hear you.
I said that if a person owns a piece of property, and they want to rent that property, their, their property out for a food truck, they have to go through their own mercantile license and get their, their-
Correct.
Paperwork done, but they can, it's, that's not prohibiting anybody else from coming in and renting a piece of property from somebody and establishing a food truck.
They still have to get the mercantile license, go through the background check, all that, and all the other licensing requirements. Food, you know, food, health, uh, fire safety, all- Food, you know, food, health, uh, fire safety, all that.
But we're not just, we're not just limiting it to the brick and mortar restaurants. We're being able to do it.
Would that use, would that, that use up one of the, um, peddler's licenses?
No, it wouldn't.
No, because you have to move. You have to be moving from place to place, street to street.
Well, the, the one, well, the one that we have, um, comes and goes. And, uh, I mean, they don't move around different places in town, but sometime, some days they're there and then some days they're, they're in another town.
I don't know which license they have and I don't know which facility you're referring to, but Matt could probably answer which type, which license they have currently.
Well, what we have is we have two businesses who have current mercantile licenses. Both are brick and mortar, established restaurants in town. Both of them have food trucks and both of them wanted to serve food out of the food trucks rather than out of the storefront. Uh, as long as it stays on private property and the tires do not touch the street, they're a non-mobile vendor, according to Andy. I got a, a legal opinion from Andy Ball. And Andy said, is, if they, if they're parked on private property and they're not moving, they're not a mobile vendor. So I think once the tires touch the street, you know, outside of private property, that's what would trigger, trigger whether it would be a vendor, uh, license, a, a peddler, uh, hawker versus a, you know, brick and mortar mercantile.
But it's-
Even if they're not serving-
Say again?
I mean, I think you're, you're, you're throwing a lot of hypotheticals out there, whereas we'd have to take it on a case by case basis.
Right now, it's just two brick and mortars who already have current businesses, current established mercantiles and who have food trucks, and they're going to use their food trucks off of their property parking lots.
So, did we leave it clear?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, then we can move on to, um, the end. We can move on to public portion? If anyone in the public has a question, could you please state your name and address for the record? Uh, seeing that nobody from the public wants to, uh, has a question or a statement, I will, um, move to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Breyon, a second by Council President Ryan. Uh, all in, are all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned at 8:33 PM. Everybody, please be safe and well.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.